Just a timeline.
Are we better now?
Better now.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I apologize for that. Welcome to the April Prince Edward County Planning Commission meeting. Due to the COVID emergency, the Prince Edward County Planning Commission is opening, operating, pursuing, and in compliance with its emergency continuity of operations ordinance. Effective August 2021, the Board has reopened meetings to in-person participation by the public. However, there could still be limited available seating, which we are fine tonight. Citizens are strongly encouraged to participate in meetings through in-person participation, written comments, and/or remote participation by calling 1-844-890-7777. Access code 390313. Additionally, citizens may view the Board meeting live in its entirety at the county's YouTube channel, the link to which is provided on the county's website. Public participation and public hearing comments for Planning Commission meetings will be subject to the Citizen Guide for providing input during public participation and public hearings for Prince Edward County Government meetings effective August 1 of 2021. At this time, we'd like to call the meeting to order. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes from last meeting? Do we have any changes or corrections to the minutes?
Everything seemed to be correct with our moves. We approved the minutes as printed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Minutes approved. At this time, the first thing on the agenda is a public hearing, special use permit for Mr. Israel Yoder for a sawmill facility. Mr. Yoder, would you or one of your family like to come up for a minute and just give us a brief overview?
Well, I don't have to, but I mean, I'd be like, it is, you have a paper.
Okay, okay, okay. Very good. Okay. Mr. Love?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. The county received an application for a special use permit from Israel Yoder for a special use permit for the sawmill facility on tax map parcel 086-A-1 on County Line Road. I provided at your place setting in your packet, the application, his project narrative, his letter from Virginia Department of Transportation, which says he has, talks about his entrance is adequate. Did note that if traffic increases, we'll possibly need to revisit the issue and maybe upgrade the surface to concrete or asphalt. But again, that will be based on, on traffic per day. They rated it as five large trucks per day, the way it is now. You do have the site plan, which is drawn, and I did a parcel map, and I put a, if you know, it's hard to see on here, but on this site is actually interior of his property behind his home. So if you look at the aerial photo, you will see a number of buildings that are a good distance away from County Line Road. This sawmill is on the backside of those structures. So it's to the rear of the property, closest to 085A2 parcel. You, this has been properly advertised, and since this is within a half mile of the county line, a notice was sent over to Charlotte County as well. And I didn't get any correspondence from Charlotte County's, other than question. I sent them the same packet of information I sent you all to the county administrator, and I didn't get any comments either for or against this application from them. You did get, I did get a letter tonight from Mr. Tom and Lorraine Grant. They had just sent this in this afternoon at 5:00. They'd been out of the, out of the area on three weeks of travel, I believe on a cruise, so they didn't, they were going to be staying at home. But they sent a letter, which you have at your place setting. Other than that letter, I have gotten no other comments for or against this application. And again, the applicant's here to answer any questions. I did provide them tonight and you all with potential conditions should you consider this. These are very similar conditions than to what was imposed on the cheese factory that's right up, right up the road on, by Mr. Yoder. So he can, you might want to ask him if he's okay with all the conditions. But other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Love. At this time, we will open the public hearing. I did not see anybody sign in to speak for or against, but does anybody here at this time in the courtroom that would like to speak for or against this special use permit? Anybody on the call? Okay. This makes it very short. At this time, we will close the public hearing and discuss amongst the board here. Does anybody on the Board have any questions for Mr. Yoder? Or any questions amongst us in regards to the public hearing?
I know I've been through this process before. We end up putting a mill in a rural agriculture area, but that's, and it's using three, 400 trucks a day. Of course, there wasn't pushback. But in the long run, it did become a benefit to the county. One thing I did notice in this, in this packet is that the hours of operation, I think I would like to have that redefined. I know it said that Mr. Yoder may want to operate up to 8:00 at night. I'm not sure that that is conducive to the area that they would like. I don't know, we could stop at 5:00 or 6:00. I think that might be more appropriate as far as hours of operation.
It was like 6:00 to 8:00, which I thought was kind of residential area.
We can recommend, if we can put that in as one of the contingencies or uses within the special use permit, one of the restrictions we have. So we can put that in there. Okay.
Did those also, you go use diesel engines? I mean, you, do you know anything about the, how loud is, are they going to be Detroit's or where they are? I mean, you know, Detroit's a whole lot louder than some other engines. I mean, is there any thought about?
The noise that was, I mean, would you say a riding on or something like that as far as?
The decibels? Okay.
I would say something like that. An events, I mean, I don't usually make the noise that a rig or beat circle, you know, does, but it still puts out some noise.
Sure.
So it is events on me?
It is events.
Yes.
Yeah. So it won't be nearly as loud then?
But you can say.
But if you think it's better to stop earlier, I mean, I.
I think that would be.
My suggestion might be 8:00 to 6:00 as opposed to 6:00 to 8:00. That way, you're allowing people in the, in the area to get to work or get off to school. And then the 8:00 to 6:00 could work better, and then it would leave the evenings free. But we can look at that as far as one of the conditions that we would put into the special use permit. Any other questions or comments from the Board? I personally think it makes sense, but I look for the Board for a motion.
I'll make a motion if we give them permission to operate the sawmill with the added conditions of the timeframe of.
Of 8:00 to 6:00? Okay.
That's 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, correct? Just for clarification. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, we'll make that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Special use permit motion is approved. It will be sent on to the County Board of Supervisors at their next meeting. And we want to thank you very much. We appreciate it.
My thank you, I appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is Public Hearing 2232 Review, which is Impact Power Solutions Solar Facility. Mr. Love, if you could give us an overview?
Yes, the county received an application for a special use permit by Impact Power Solutions to construct and operate a 5-megawatt solar energy facility on tax map 043-A-36. This is Ms. Reeves' property off of Lama Road. For those of you who have been here prior to my time, there was once a special use permit issued to this parcel and another parcel for a solar site prior to our solar ordinance. That site went dead about over a year ago. It was, it was during Mr. Bartlet's time, they sent him a request to have that withdrawn. But that, and that's, it's been over two years. They never did pull any permits or do anything. So Ms. Reeves has gotten together with Impact Power Solutions. This is a community solar site. And per, and of course, any solar under the Code of Virginia requires a, Virginia Code Section 15.2 requires a 2232 review to ensure that the public utility facility, prior to construction authorization and prior to any approval of a public hearing, is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. In your packet of information, I put the existing conditions and zoning information, some references to air comprehensive plan. And in notations, this site is heavily buffered and will not be seen from Thomas Jefferson, which is a scenic byway. So there's no concern with that. This has been properly advertised. And again, with this and the special use permit was sent over to Charlotte County, and I had no comment from them either for or against this application, nor has anybody else made any comment for or against this application. So again, tonight, you would, this, this first hearing, I've got some recommended motions here. It plays into the special use permit, which comes next, should you approve this.
What was the size of the first when we approved? Was it five also?
I don't think so. I think it was a little larger. It was more parcels involved in that.
Right.
Multiple parcels.
Yeah. It wasn't a community. It was larger.
Yeah.
I was not here then, but I did pull that file, and it was about three different tracts of land involved in that one.
Right.
Any other questions?
The other solar people?
I did not.
Any other questions from the Board before we open the public hearing? At this time, we will open the public hearing. And I checked before unless somebody had signed in since then. Does anybody wish to speak for or against?
I'm the representative of Buckley.
In fact, it'd be great, sir, if you'd come up to the podium, just give us a little overview.
Well, thank you. I'm Evan Carlson. I work for Impact Power Solutions. I'm the chief real estate officer, so I handle site acquisition and permitting for all of our projects. This is a community solar garden, and that is different from some of the other projects, like the previous project that you've seen. Have you had a community solar garden before? I could, I can tell you a little bit about that.
We have one. Yeah, we have one.
Okay. So you understand, you know, it, the power goes directly into the distribution network and not the transmission network. So it gets consumed right on site. And then we have subscribers to the garden who buy a bill credit and get treated like that power is being produced up on their roof. So the economics of it are a little different. It's not just selling power. There is a direct economic benefit locally. And underneath the array, we agree to plant a pollinator-friendly seed mix. We submitted the Virginia seeding guidelines. They've put forth some pretty good guidelines on how to establish a pollinator base and then how to maintain it. And there's like a five-year check program to make sure it gets done right. And that's important because it not only provides wildlife habitat, but also it's good for the soil, gives the soil a break between farms. It also slows down the velocity of water runoff and improves the permeability of the soil. No pesticides are used, so any insects that are in the soil would have an opportunity to, you know, burrow in there and again, create more wildlife habitat for the things that eat them, like birds and the other predatory animals that eat those animals. So the whole thing is fixed to the ground with the driven I-beam. There's no concrete attaching it to the ground, pounding the I-beams panels on a, on the beams, on a rack. There they sit. So, I mean, if you've had a few of them before, you understand generally what they look like. The most important thing is getting down that base before you build so that you don't have any problems with erosion or anything like that early on or during construction.
If the special use permit is approved, what's a timeframe before you would be up and running?
Boy, that's a good question. So in some, we are at the mercy of the utility and of the state. So when we saw the state program open up for community solar gardens, we knew it was a limited program. They're only going to allow so many of them. And we were wondering if it would just fill up right away, and then there wouldn't be room. But it didn't. So there's still plenty of room for this year's program on that end. However, you have to get studied by the utility and have your study complete before you're eligible to submit into the program. And in order to be studied, you need to demonstrate that you're either the, you have to be the first in the interconnection queue. And, or you can be second in queue if you also have the first position. You can study them both. And you really only pay those study fees and go through that study process if you have done a preliminary screen and learned that there's room in the, in the distribution grid for that amount of power. So we have performed that initial screen. We're in the A position, and we're in study. So it's looking likely, I would hope, spring 2023?
Okay, thank you.
What's the initial composition, ground composition right now? I just can't tell if this area was at all. Half wooded, third wooded, what is it now?
Yeah, I'd say it's about, well, maybe half wooded. And the rest of that, I believe, is in hay. Is that correct? Yes.
Okay. And so you will commence a harvesting operation if this permit is approved?
Yeah, we got to get, well, the trees anyway.
Top of.
Yep, we got to get the trees off. And then as far as the hay goes, that's a good start, so.
So do you grub it? You completely grub the site?
Not if it's got in hay. If it's in hay, we start with.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about forest.
Yes, yeah, yep.
Okay, what is, I mean, what is the, I don't see a topo map on this. What is the?
There are some hills. So one of the two solar panels, you see them set up in two different ways. They either go from east to west, and they face the south, and they don't move. Or they go from north to south, and they pivot on a single axis. If they go from north to south, they need a really flat service because they got to get that axis, the trackers on one axis, right? So it's got to be flat. If you go with the east to west fixed system, you can handle a lot more topography. So these have some hills, but we aren't proposing grading on them. They're proposing to leave them as, as they are.
Well, out of curiosity, then why is this particular site attracted?
You know, it's, it's, it's really electrical grid, you know? One of the things, when we start looking for these things, we start looking for areas that can handle the power load. And then B, the second most important thing is whether or not people can see it. Because, you know, we have to get the thing permitted in order to get it done. So a number one deal killer of these is people coming out and saying, I don't want to look at it. People have different opinions about solar, but at the end of the day, you can't tell somebody that they should want to look at the thing. So, but here, we got a site that's pretty well hidden. So it's, it's one where we're, we're near a type of distribution level power line called a three-phase power line, which is, you know, a three-line. And that runs to a substation that is about a mile away. And there's room on that substation and on that line for this project. And to give it context, we started with about 100 leases when we entered the state. We're down to about 10 that are working out, that we learned that actually had room.
Well, I think against my last one, you are not purchasing against, be simple then. You are, is a lease?
Yep.
10, 20?
About 25 years, two options to renew for five each. So the term of the interconnection is 25, however, it could be longer. Also, you know, because we not only agree with you to post a security to decommission the project, we agree with the landowner to do that as well. So in the future, the landowner is in a really great bargaining position to extend, to, to continue the lease. I own a couple farms, and what I intend to do is just say, you know, they got to dig it up there and get it off of there if you don't. Tell them that it's okay if you leave it, as well as get the SUP extended. So you, the landowner can, they call it repowering the project, or they can take ownership of the equipment. But the point is, there's an opportunity there to renegotiate if you want to. And if you don't, we got to get it out of there.
It's not abandoned, it's removed?
Yes. The money is set aside to remove it from day one.
Okay.
Right. But practically speaking, there's no way you'd abandon a power producer. You know, as long as power has value, you just, the solar panels represent about 25% of the, of the hard costs of the equipment. So, you know, replacing solar panels is one piece of the project. So likely to, we would want to continue in the future, if possible.
Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions from the board?
Do you think because there is, it is a larger parcel that you would eventually expand and enlarge it?
Probably not. Community solar is limited to five megawatts alternating current. So the deal is that, you know, we're not selling power to the utility. We're going around the utility because, you know, the utility is a monopoly. You can't pick where you get your power from. But you can have this option where you agree to buy the bill credit from the project and offset your bill as if it were on your, as if these solar panels were right on your property. So, you know, when you get solar panels on your property, you can do something called net metering, where you, you get a meter that spins in two directions and you take the net of the meter. It's basically the same thing, only it's done through a bill credit. Yeah.
I have one question. If I were to, excuse me, have a home there and I have this system on my home, what type of savings will I get through the year?
Yeah, well, that, I mean, if you wanted to put solar panels on your house and, and just forget about this thing, it's just a matter of the economics of the cost of installation, the cost of borrowing the money, and then how much power you're offsetting that, that you use, you know? If you, 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 you want to get it big enough so that you're offsetting, let's say 100% of your bill. And in other, this is not what we're doing here, but in other markets, I've seen maybe a, like a seven-year payback on residential systems. But my expertise is really not in residential. It's in community solar. But the people who subscribe to the project, they oftentimes, these, these are people who they rent a, say, an industrial space and they don't own the rooftop and they want to do solar, but they don't own the spot or they live in an apartment or something like that. So they have no means of actually doing the solar. If they subscribe to the garden, they immediately get a savings on their power bill. They pay less through the bill credit than they would otherwise pay for their power. And they don't have to pay to actually buy the equipment. We do all that at the onset of the project. So they just sign a contract, they buy the bill credits, they offset their bill.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, sir.
Yes, thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing for 202232 review. Again, is there anybody on the call? Okay. Is there anybody in the courtroom that wishes to speak for or against this special use permit? 2232. With that, I'll close the public hearing and allow the board to discuss or make a recommendation.
How many projects do we have under this new provision?
This will be number two.
Yes, number two, yes. Just the same.
Is there another one in operation that we have a chance to look at?
It's not that far along yet. It was just, it was also just approved. It's up, further up Thomas Jefferson in the same region of the county. And it's also, like I said, community solar is limited to five megawatts and we've only had two applications and I have no other pre-application meetings that I've met with anyone. The other thing about, I will mention that the applicant didn't, in the Code of Virginia, community solar or shared solar is defined and a percentage of the subscribers do have to be low to moderate income folks. So this, this, this program is geared to help folks lower their, their power bill that are Dominion consumers, they have to be Dominion consumers?
Yeah.
And they, but it will help folks that are on fixed income, but it's not limited to Prince Edward County residents. It's limited to anybody on Dominion.
Yes. There may be a geographic component of that.
Okay.
And the, the program is still so new that I, I haven't actually seen other typically. Well, for one, you know they got to be a Dominion customer, otherwise what good is Dominion's bill credit? But often you see a geographic component. There's definitely a low income group, we've seen that. But I think that may be fleshed out a little more.
Well, again, that's, that's, that's definite framework in, in the Code of Virginia that governs how that subscriber program runs.
That's really the way it was put together was to look at.
I just looked at your application. I think you're pretty confident.
From the board, do we have a motion?
We looked at this pretty in depth before and he's brought forward. I think Rob's come up with some good stipulations. I don't think we have a motion, we'll go ahead and approve it.
Well, you want to first look, look at the 2232 review and make that motion.
That's the first one.
That's the first public hearing.
That's the first public hearing. That's the one that we actually just closed.
That is substantially in accord, whether, whether you feel substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan or not. That's step one.
We have to go two steps on this. That goes back to page 23. Truly what we're reviewing, the 2232 for acceptance here.
Mr. Jones, do you want my copy?
Bobby.
I'm getting there.
All right. I've got, I've got an extra if you need it.
All right.
I have an extra copy too.
Okay.
It's on page 24.
Okay. I move that Impact Power Solutions LLC proposes five megawatt community solar energy facility as described in the special use permit application is substantially in accordance with Prince Edward County comprehensive plan and promotes the growth objectives and strategies noted in the plan.
Wave a motion, wave a second then?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand? Okay. No opposed? The motion is passed, it will be sent on to the county board of supervisors. Okay, the, the second part now is the public hearing for the special use permit itself.
Can I go over that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Again, I won't go over some of the information I went over before, but again, this is a five megawatt facility on 33.6 acres of land. This has been duly advertised, adjoining property on letters sent, letters sent to Charlotte County, and I've received no comments for or against this application. The information is basically the same. I did not send you the application, but I did bring it with me. They, they submitted a full packet of information, including the financial impact, which you've got electronically. And I did prepare conditions for you. These are similar conditions than what we've used in the past, and I have provided them to the applicant, and that's all I have. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board before we open the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Love.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we'll open the public hearings for special use permit, Impact Power Solutions for the solar facility. Is anybody on the call? No, okay. Anybody in the courthouse wish to speak for or against? With no other comments, we will close the public hearing and look to the board for any review, comments, or a motion.
No, I think that, I think, I know, speaking for myself, I'm kind of torn between taking agriculture and forestry land and turning it into solar panels. I mean, that's, that's, that's the biggest controversy there is right now, but I think in this particular case, there it's the benefit outweighed.
If you, if you'd like, then you could proceed with the motion, if you look, just for the motion for either approval or acceptance? Okay.
I so moved to accept.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Settle those conditions, Mr. Fuller.
Are there any conditions? Okay. So there's, there's a motion on the floor that the planning commission recommend approval of the special use permit request by Impact Power Solutions for a proposed five megawatt community solar energy scale, solar energy facility. Do we have a second then?
All right, that's with conditions.
That's with conditions, yes. With the conditions as shown.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand? Opposed? Motion pass. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, at this time, Mr. Love, will you go over the review of supervisor actions?
Yes. They wanted to advise you that the board of supervisors held their public hearing on the subdivision ordinance amendment, and we had a large turnout from residents in a contingent and representatives from foreign bureau. And the board decided collectively to re-advertise that, lowering the advertised standard to five acres. And that would be, again, that would be if it's to be in agricultural or forestal use. So the board will have that public hearing at their May 10th meeting. They can do anything from five acres and more, but they can't go less than the advertised five. Do you have anything to add on that one?
No, I think that's pretty much covered.
Okay. So we, 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 we are going to be advertising that and, and have that public hearing in May. That kind of leads me into.
Yes.
Old and new business.
Yes, old business.
Well, really, I don't have a whole lot of old business, other than at your place setting by our HR do have a request, our auditors are requiring us to get the employee withholding certificate and the Virginia, with the state and federal information on there. Didn't want you to send that back to us electronic because it does have some personal information. So if you can, please complete that tonight and we'll continue to pay you all. Thank you for your service. And nothing changes on that, that's just procedural paperwork. I do have some new business to go.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. This kind of ties into some, also with some supervisor action. At the last board meeting, the board adopted an emergency ordinance to amend Appendix B of the Prince Edward County Code zoning to amend sections 2-100, 2-200, 2-800, and 2-900, 2-1000, 3-104.1, and 4.400.5. And that is to provide a maximum size for flags and to amend the height requirements for flag poles, to limit the height of flag poles to 20 feet and to allow taller flag poles in A1, A2, C1, I1, and CR zoning districts upon the issuance of a special use permit. And as part of that emergency ordinance, it requires that we have public hearings. So the board has requested and we will be sitting at your May 17th regular meeting, which is back on Tuesday night, a joint public hearing with the board of supervisors and you all for this matter. Now, if I have any other applications come before us that I can meet advertising, I'll also include that in your packet, but right now, this is the primary business item that you will have at your next meeting. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on that matter. I did provide you with the copy of what is to be, what came out of the board. It does show what's being stricken from the, from the proposed to be removed and what's proposed to be in place. And again, this, the emergency ordinance is already in place. So the, it's in effect and it is, this is county policy today. It is county zoning regulation today. The joint meeting would be to consider making this a permanent zoning matter. But just so you all know what our regulations are, this is what our regulations are today.
And the flag is still up as of this?
It was 15 minutes ago.
Yeah, I was going to say, as of last night was. I'm sorry, the flag pole was up. It has nothing to do with the flag, it only has to do with the pole.
This, this matter did come before, before the board because we do have a zoning violation in the county. We have a flag pole that was installed without a zoning permit that is too tall in that district and also is, doesn't have a primary use. That's a vacant piece of property and it's a C1 parcel with no primary use and flag poles are only permitted as an accessory of a primary. So there were two issues on that site, but this is to clarify the code and to put parameters in place.
Old or new business from the, the board?
I've got one comment.
Yes, sir.
As these packets are produced, I know you usually send a parcel map.
Yes.
I wondered if that could be, with that parcel map, could be included a county map with a location on it?
Yes, I can.
I think that would be helpful because a lot of times, I mean, I'm familiar with a lot of these places, but sometimes you don't know where they are in relation to garden heights or worship or wherever it is. I think it'd be very helpful if you did have a county map with a location on it.
I can do a second sheet. Yeah, I can do a second sheet for that.
Yeah. You could do that. And then if you have, even on that parcel map, we could have a topo map overlay.
I don't have topo on it.
I didn't know if you had that or not.
I don't have.
The location map would be.
Yeah.
Anything else on the board? With that, we will close the meeting, the April meeting. Thank you, everybody, for attending. And if you could, please hand these forms to Mr. Love before you leave. Otherwise, you're not allowed to leave.